Well, welcome, everyone. Would you all please rise for the presentation of the colors by troop 307?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Troop 307. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. It's good to see the big contingent of our Boy Scouts present. Thank you very much. And thank you for offering to do that. Appreciate it. It's fun. Okay, and actually, we've got a former, I don't know if you young men know this or not, but we have a former Eagle Scout.
You ever a former?
Always, exactly. Thank you. Very good. And we've got two Eagle Scouts. Councilmember Jack Walsh and Councilmember Jack Doby. So you may want to, you know, sit down with him or schedule some time with him. And our former mayor, the first elected mayor of the City of Federway, who served in both the appointed capacity as mayor and the first elected mayor, Skip Priest, was also an Eagle Scout and very involved regionally with the Boy Scouts, right? And actually, our deputy mayor was involved, and your husband were involved as Scouts for years, right?
Yep, and I am the Qantas advisor for Troop 307.
Very good. Okay.
And my kids.
Very good. Yeah? All right, thank you.
Can't go wrong with Scouts.
Were all the, Councilmember Sephardos, were all the boys involved in Scout? Two of them? Which ones?
Kido and Josh.
That's great. Awesome. That's great. Well, we, as we, actually, Councilmember Walsh and Councilmember Doby, any special memories from being Eagle Scouts and what?
They probably can't talk about it.
I will tell you, I will tell you one special memory. It was Order the Arrow. I don't know if anybody's doing that, but you don't have to be an Eagle Scout to do that, but they took us up to, by Buck Creek, the Boy Scout Camp Shepherd up there, and you go out there and they throw you out in the woods and you don't eat, and then they give you a raw egg to eat and some oatmeal, and you do all the stuff and you can't talk for, I think, 24 hours, and then they have a great steak dinner after you made it into the Order of the Arrow.
Wow.
As I remember.
Old school.
But, yeah, and being on search and rescue, that was a great thing. I don't know if they still have it, but you always had your backpack packed, ready to go to find somebody that was lost up in the mountains.
Wow. Always be ready. Councilmember Walsh?
I mean, some of my great scouting experiences, I mean, not necessarily Eagle Scout, but well, helped me get the hiking merit patches, is hiking rim to rim the Grand Canyon and just an incredible experience that I would like to do again someday, but I'm not sure that my knees will allow anymore. But wonderful experiences in scouting and it's builds character and boys carry on, trail to eagle.
Very good. All right, thank you. Okay, let's now move on to item three, the mayor's issues and report, emerging issues and report. Well, first, we've got a crime statistic report from our police chief, Andy Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. This evening, I'll be providing you with the 2022 crime statistics and public safety report. I'll first share with you Washington State crime data in comparison to the national data, looking at crime trend. I will share with you 2022 Federway crime statistics and also NiBIRS data reporting investigation. Last year, an anonymous citizen filed a complaint that the Federway Police Department was misclassifying and underreporting aggravated assaults and other crimes as well. The city hired a third-party outside investigator who determined that there was no evidence of misrepresenting or underreporting aggravated assault or any other crime. And I will share the highlights of that investigation with you this evening. Washington State crime trend exceed national trends. In 2021, there were 325 homicides. That's the highest number recorded in the 40 years that these statistics have been kept. 2022, we saw a 384 homicides in the state of Washington. That's another 18% increase. That's an all-time high for our state. Since 2015, homicide in Washington State have increased by 96%. It has doubled. Traffic death were at a 20-year-high last year, 745. Violent crime in Washington State increased by 55% between 2015 and 2021. Violent crimes include murder, aggravated assault, robbery, and rape. Nationwide, in comparing to Washington, nationwide increased by 10%. So Washington violent crime rate has increased much at a greater rate than the nation. Homicides, 2021 to 2022, I shared with you that we increased by 18% year over year. Nationwide, it's down 4%. Homicides, 2015 to 2021, up 96%. Nationwide, 44%. Violent crime, 2015 to 2021, Washington State, 55% up. Nationwide, up 10%. Traffic death, 2021 to 2022, up 11%, slightly down nationwide. Auto theft, 2021 to 2022, up 31%. Nationwide, up 7%. Homelessness, 2020 to 2022, up 10%, slightly down nationwide. You might ask, why is our crime trend higher than the nation? I think Washington in general, we've been more lenient with offenders. There's a lack of accountability, particularly in our region, but there's a couple of things that happened that's really accelerated the safety and security of our community statewide. And one is virtually the no pursuit law that passed July of 2021. For example, our auto theft number is significantly up. As of today, we've had 630 offenders elude from the police in which we could not pursue in any one of those cases. Give you an example, if a burglar, 2:30 in the morning, rams a vehicle into Walgreens, Rite Aid, any business, an officer observes that, or we get an alarm dispatch and we intercept, we cannot pursue. We have to let the suspects go. A stolen vehicle, we have to let them go. We cannot do anything to pursue them. And that is the imbalance that exists, that offenders have more rights than victims in the state. Second aspect is we're currently in a drug epidemic, and at the state level, they virtually legalized all drugs. They made it virtually impossible for police to enforce. By design, they didn't want police to intervene. That's why we have chaos in our public spaces with drug use. And I've been told by crime analysts that 80% of crime has nexused drugs. And the experiment that Washington State has conducted has failed miserably, and we need to take action at the state level. So that is my opinion as to why things have deteriorated in the state of Washington. All right, so 2022 Federway crime statistics. The blue line here is 2021. The green line is 2022. Overall, our crime increased by 6%. And I'll share some more data with you. Hadn't our auto theft gone up as much as it has, we'd have a flat year. But it's auto theft that's really driving the numbers up. So overall crime, up 6% from 8,322 crimes to 8,830. Murder is down 27%. 11 murders in '21 to eight murders in 2022. Robbery's down 7%, 168 to 156. Aggravated assault is up 11% from 293 to 324. Burglary commercial, down 1%, 458 to 454. Residential burglary, down 28%, 318 to 232. I wanted to just pause here and share with you, the burglary residential particularly is some of the lowest number we've seen historically in our city. And I, more home security, people are home more, crime trend has changed, so the criminals aren't breaking into home as much. Another thing I will tell you is that one of the policy decisions at the policy level, your level, city departments, community support, I can tell you today that we have really no active illegal homeless camps in Federway. Very few communities can say that. We pick up shopping carts. You'll be hard to find graffiti in our city. There are little things that we do that is making a positive difference in our community, and I know for a fact, commercial burglaries are down because of the policy decision we've taken over the last several years. Because I could tell you when we have illegal homeless encampments, particularly large ones, the burglary numbers in that particular area skyrocket. And when we clean up the illegal homeless encampment, crime drops. Larceny, down 3%, 3,041 to 2,956. Motor theft up 58%, 946 to 1,494. I could tell you that since the no pursuit law went into effect, our auto theft number has doubled. We have no problem finding stolen vehicles. We have no problem finding stolen vehicles that are occupied. The fact is, we just can't do anything when we do it. So, and quite often, these offenders will ram our vehicles, do everything to get away from us. Drug narcotic offenses, up 32%, 38 to 50. I want to share with you total traffic collisions, because if you're a law-abiding citizen, you're not involved in illegal drug trade, illegal criminal activity, the reality is that somebody is going to assault you or hurt you is very minimal, excluding domestic violence. With traffic accidents, it's random. You're meeting people you don't know. It can happen to anyone. It doesn't matter. So I'd like to share this. I can tell you that year to year, very little changed from '21 and '22. Because it was so high in December, typically, we see higher numbers because it's darker, visibility's poor, rain, we see an increase, we see more vehicles on the road, people shopping. This is when collisions occur more often, and we see a peak usually in the summer as well. But I wondered to see if it continued into 2023, and you can see the lines cross. And I'll get into a little more details with traffic accidents. So last year, we had seven fatal collisions in our city. We had a total of 507 injury accidents, 1,086 non-injury, a total of 1,600. Overall, if you look at historical numbers, we've seen a decrease, and the numbers remained relatively flat last couple of years. And I would tell you, 2021, when there was a lockdown, we saw criminal activity and also traffic accidents drop significantly because people were staying home. And then DUI accidents, 51 last year. Car versus pedestrian accident, 53. Car versus cyclist, 17. So relatively flat with those particular categories. And then one of the performance measures that I pay attention to and our command staff is our response time. So these response time represents all calls that come into Valleycom, from somebody calling 911 to an officer arriving on scene. For every call, this is the average time, and you can see last year, 1973. If this number creeps up, I will certainly hear more complaints from residents about delay in our response, those type of things. So we monitor that to make sure we have adequate staffing, moving positions around to make sure that our response time is adequate. Supervisors are monitoring calls, our senior officers are monitoring calls to make sure they're taken care of. And then you can see that our calls for service last year was 72,769, relatively flat from the year before. I would tell you that as a city, back in '16 and '17, we saw a significant increase in calls. We saw a huge peak in our population at that time, 3,000 one year, 5,000 the other, increases that are population more than most city size in the state of Washington. So we experienced some growing pains at that time, those years. Okay, I'm going to move to NiBIRS data reporting investigation. National Incident-Based Reporting System, NiBIRS, is a reporting system used by law enforcement agencies that voluntarily report offense data to the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting Program. As an accredited agency, Federway participated in NiBIRS. We do it because it's best practice, even as 40% of law enforcement agencies nationwide fail to do so. An investigation was initiated after city received anonymous complaint, April 2022, that was a year ago we received this complaint, from a Federway resident alleging crime data manipulation. This was a serious allegation. Even though this was anonymous, external complaint, the city directed a third-party attorney to investigate the matter in the interest of transparency. The purpose of the investigation was to determine whether Federway PD intentionally underreported aggravated assaults and other crimes. The investigator noted in the investigation that collecting and entering data for NiBIRS purposes is a technical and complex process for law enforcement agencies. Federway PD documents about 18,000 case reports a year and respond to approximately 70,000 calls for service per year. That's about 200 calls coming into our city on a daily basis. The complaintant questioned about 113 potentially misclassified cases out of several thousand case reports. The investigator conducted an extensive review. It took several months to complete. The investigator analyzed a sample of incidents that were alleged to be misclassified. The investigator did a very deep dive into five of the 113. In those five cases, they interviewed all the officers involved, reviewed the police force, reviewed the NiBIRS policies. After that extensive analysis, the investigator determined that in all those five cases, they were properly classified. So that was one part of the investigation. The second review was the State Unified Crime Reporting Program manager. The investigator asked for assistance from the person who manages the NiBIRS reporting for the entire state of Washington. That program manager analyzed Federway PD's NiBIRS crime reporting, and she compared it to a comparable city, City of Auburn, and she determined that the Federway Police Department was properly reporting NiBIRS crimes. The investigator then looked at a bigger sample, looked at four cities total, Federway, Auburn, Kent, and Renton. And Kent and Renton is a bigger city than City of Federway. Analyzing NiBIRS data for Auburn, Kent, Renton, Federway, Federway had higher number of aggravated assaults than other agencies. Federway had the second, was second in the number of robberies compared to these jurisdictions. Let me share some numbers with you. In 2021, Federway aggravated assaults were 292. Renton was 200. Auburn was 184. Kent was 244. For robberies, Federway was 168. Renton, 99. Auburn, 130. Kent, 194. The very crime that we were manipulating and reducing, yet we were the highest of the comparable cities. When comparing NiBIRS crime statistics with these agencies in the South King County that are similar in population and socioeconomic factors, crime data are within the regional norm. These comparative crime numbers with South King County agencies are strong indicators that the Federway PD practices are consistent with other law enforcement agencies. The investigating attorney found no evidence that crime numbers were intentionally manipulated or underreported by Federway PD. This was based on extensive review of the cases sampled for the investigation, comparison of Federway crime statistics with comparable cities, and review and analyzing data collected by the State Unified Crime Reporting Program. The police officers and professional staff at Federway PD are people of integrity with an outstanding reputation. I wholeheartedly trust in the work that our people do every single day. There is no way our officers are intentionally manipulating crime data. They are reporting accurately what crimes occur in our city and documenting it, and they're swearing under oath that their report is accurate. The citizens of Federway are served by competent police force, duly accredited by the state of Washington, by the state and national levels that meet the highest standard in professional policing. There are three police departments that are both nationally and state accredited. We are one of three in the state of Washington. These accreditations are not easy to obtain. I'll give you one example. Washington State Patrol does an audit every three years for police departments for data entry, for entering protection orders, warrants into the access Washington State database and nationwide. Last month, our agency scored 100%. In the exit interview, the auditor told me that it is very rare that any police department gets 100% score of the samples they draw for an audit. That is an indication that our record staff are doing exceptionally good work. I would have been satisfied with 90% because human beings can make mistakes, but 100%, it's worth bragging about. We will continue doing our best to do NiBIRS right and prioritize accordingly to keep our community secure and safe. No inside or outside influence is going to influence NiBIRS numbers, period, long as I am the police chief. And I will answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Walsh, I'll say you've got your button on. All right. And council, any questions? Councilmember Sephardos?
Ed, do you know why our crime rates are higher than the other jurisdictions then? Any speculation even?
I would tell you that's similar, but you know, one of the challenges that we have in Federway is Highway 99. Has a lot of businesses, it brings a lot of people, robust transportation. We have people coming through. I would say Federway is kind of the hub of South King County. This is where people come. This is the gathering place. We have a lot of people coming through. And by far, most people come through without any issues. Numbers are the numbers. That's what our officers are reporting.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, I have a question regarding car theft.
Yes.
We all know it's gone through the roof, and I'm reading the Federway newspaper here, and in the April 5th through April 11th, there was 29 reports of car thefts, anywhere from three to seven a day.
Yes.
And I understand that it has to do with the state of Washington's new laws or old laws, hopefully some of them changed. But I guess I wanted to clarify, if somebody reported that that car was stolen and it was stopped and you knew exactly where it was, could our officers get it back, or would they have to get it after somebody got out of the car?
No, we could attempt to secure the vehicle, make an arrest.
But if they drove off, you couldn't do anything?
Pretty much, yes. And the lawmakers are saying, let them go. That's what we prefer, safe for all involved, but there's unattended consequences. People are dying on our streets.
So, and I guess the last, my follow-up question is if that car was stolen and it was parked in somebody's driveway or Lakota Junior High or wherever, and you were notified and you knew it was there, then you could go to that point if nobody was in the car and secure it?
Absolutely. That happens all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, member. Thank you, Councilmember Doby. And there were extensive efforts this year to get the bill amended, first to reduce the standard for all pursuits from an unacceptable high to probable cause threshold. That means you could actually file charges at the moment that you'd start the pursuit, which is, anybody knows anything about the practice of criminal law knows that that just never happens. So there was a bill and an effort to move that down to reasonable suspicion, which is usually the standard to be able to initiate a stop or initiate contact. It's referred to as a Terry stop or reasonable suspicion that a crime is occurring. And so there were numerous efforts to get that bill through the legislature. The legislature finally did now pass, it went through the House and through the Senate, and there was a somewhat of a compromise in that they did change the standard from probable cause to reasonable suspicion, but only for certain violent crimes, for sex offenses, violent offenses, but that specifically does not include stolen vehicles. So even though I testified multiple times before the legislature, a lobbyist testified for it, there are many cities in the state of Washington that were asking for this law to get changed. They refused to change it. So that's still the status of the law. If your car is stolen and a law enforcement officer is behind it, they cannot pursue your stolen car. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the report, and thank you for the work that you and your staff do every day to keep us safe. I do have a question. Can you go back to the slide where it show the average respond time? Yes. Okay, so I am looking at the year of 2019. The average respond time was only 17.41 minutes, and there was more than 75,000 call for service. Then I look at 20, 21, and even 22. Look at the 2022, the average responding time was 19 minutes and 73 seconds. But the call for service is pretty much the same as 20 and 21. Now, didn't we have more officer, didn't we hire more officer starting in the year of 2021 and 2022? If we have more officer, would you think the average responding time would be a little bit shorter when we have more resources?
If you just compare, if you just look at that variable alone. But I would tell you, one of the factors that's increasing response time or amount of time an officer spending on a call is partly because of the reform laws. The laws require de-escalation. Maybe right now, we go to a trespass call. We're probably going to spend more time on that call trying to get verbal compliance, verbal compliance, and then all of a sudden, we got to have three, four officers respond to that call. So then, now, those officers aren't available to respond to calls. So those are the, those are the kind of the variables that could really change. But I would tell you, the reform laws are clearly taking more time on our calls. We get a barricaded person, we are exhausting all possible, you know, de-escalation technique, including calling the SWAT team out quite often. We're calling them out more often now than we've done in the past because we want to comply with the spirit of the law, which is de-escalate, time, distance, and so forth. So that's a very important factor I want to point out.
Yeah, thank you for that information, because by looking at just this information, it doesn't tell the whole story.
I know you're a number guy, so I have to bring in some facts to bring it to reality.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Walsh?
Hey, I would just like to, these three officers that are about to be sworn in, after your stating the challenges that we have here in the state of Washington due to our legislature, I want to commend these three for being willing to join the force and to put up with the garbage that Olympia is making us go through. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh, are you going to ask her to volunteer on the 22nd? Later. Okay. She's joking. She wants you to volunteer for our parks on the 22nd. That's his mantra. We go out and dig weeds out of the parks. So thank you very much, Chief, for all of your work and all of the work by all of our officers. Thank you. I know it's, it's like we tie your hands to try to do your job, and so thank you for trying to work the best way you can. You did mention that some of the ordinances that we pass have helped, the fact that we have fewer encampments. So I'm wondering, I'm pretty sure that, no sleep, no wine. So I'm wondering if, I'm pretty sure that no sit, no sleep, no lie on the city sidewalk was pretty indicative of that.
Yeah, pedestrian interference ordinance, yes.
Yeah, exactly. So otherwise you'd see tents on your sidewalks, just like in downtown Seattle. So, and why don't you see tents in Bellevue? Because they have that ordinance, no sit, no sleep, no lie on a city sidewalk. So I, I think it would be helpful if you, and I'm sure that you've talked about this with the mayor, but different kinds of ordinances that we can pass. Once this legislation, the legislature is completed, I know that they're legalizing possession of hard drugs or trying to, I'm not sure where that bill went. So you know, whether we need to put an ordinance on the books that says any hard drugs would be a misdemeanor and go through our court so we can get them some help. So wondering those kinds of types of ordinances.
Yes, I think we should wait for the outcome with Olympia. And once we know what that is, then we could consider what our options are. Because there's a House bill and a Senate bill. You know, they got to put that together and we don't know how it's going to play out.
Yeah, and isn't there a committee or an appointed committee of 22 people that are going to be looking over the different, the police pursuit law, for example, over the next two years? Is that correct? Is it the police pursuit or something else?
I'm not familiar with that detail anymore. But like the mayor was saying, that even the current pursuit law version isn't going to help with stolen vehicles.
No.
What we don't want is a policy decision telling offenders that police will not chase you. That's just not a good practice. They got to be under the belief if that, if they commit a crime, they could be held accountable. And we didn't have this problem before the law went into effect. We still have lawmakers who say that the, the pursuit law has no impact on crime. And I'm telling you as a police professional, it has, but.
So I think that we need, our community as well as our electeds need to stay on top of this to make sure that we protect our community and our citizens. That's our, our primary goal is public safety. That is our primary mission, to protect you, the citizens of Federway. So we will do that as much as we can. We will need your help. In other words, right now, some of those, in my estimation, some of those bills protect the criminal instead of the citizen. So you know, if you don't want your catalytic converter stolen, you want your car to be there when you get up in the morning to go to work, you got to make your, make your, make your voice heard. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So my son is a police officer in Iowa and we were having a discussion about hiring police officers in Iowa just two days ago. And it's hard to hire police officers in Iowa too. I think it's a national trend that.
You're not recruiting, are you? Officers disregard that.
But it's interesting because I know it's hard to hire officers here, but it's, it's hard, I think, everywhere. So anyway, I commend those who want to go into public safety. It's a tough job, 24 hours a day. But Mike, could you go to the slide where you have the offenses? I'm interested in the drug offenses. How many people?
Was it this?
Yes, so in 2022, you had 50 folks who were arrested for drug offenses. What were, what were those that they were arrested for?
I wouldn't say those are necessarily all arrest. You, you could have like a marijuana home investigation. That would be maybe a drug offense, not necessarily arrest itself.
Okay. So I'm not sure what's happened with the Blake policy, with the Blake law today. I, I don't know if they had any movement on it today. But if at the end of the week and at the end of the session, if something doesn't change in that, what would you recommend that we do here in Federway? There are other cities who are passing ordinances about drug use in, in public and making that a misdemeanor?
I think accountability is important. If Olympia does nothing and the city, and they don't, if nothing is done, all drugs, and we can't even give drug warning, third, third warning, we could take some level of, you know, enforcement, that would all go. So we could certainly look at the option of creating our own ordinance at the municipal level, misdemeanor crime.
I, I think the chances of nothing happening are pretty low. Right now, what's gone through is the Senate has, has agreed to a gross misdemeanor, which is punishable up to 364 days a year. The House, which is a more progressive body, is, came up with a counterproposal of a simple misdemeanor and certain, which is nine, up to 90 days and a thousand dollar fine. And so they are, I think, reconciling those two versions. So I think you'll, you'll see. So I would be surprised, but it would take us no time at all to get something on the books. We actually had in the time after Blake, as, as you all know, we had on the books here a gross misdemeanor statute that, that corrected the law. The Blake decision, just to go over it just one more time very quickly, just said that the prior drug law was unconstitutional because it didn't have the phrase, it didn't require the state to prove that the individual knowingly possessed a controlled substance, an intent element. And so literally, all the legislature had to do was add one word. Instead, what they did is they made this very complicated law that required two prior referrals to prove that there were two prior referrals to treatment before an individual could be held to account for a possession of cocaine, heroin, methamphetamine, whatever it is, fentanyl. So now the, even the two versions eliminate that preliminary step. But if, if they get through the session, get to signee die the last day of the session and there is none, we will immediately, at our very next opportunity, reinstate the law. There is something called state preemption, the doctrine of state preemption. And that's what, what is put, it's more so in the, in the House proposal than in the Senate. But, but there's still, there's always been in regard to drug laws under RCW 69, Chapter 69. There's always a phrase in there that says we, that they retain exclusive jurisdiction over drug crimes. But when the Blake decision rendered that law unconstitutional, that created that gap and we filled that gap until the new law came into place. But you're right, if there, if there is a gap, then what I would suggest to the council is that we immediately reinstate our gross misdemeanor law. But I don't think there will be. But we'll certainly keep everybody up to speed.
I think we need to be ready.
Yeah.
I think public drug use is, is wrong. I don't, I think it's not a good thing for our city or any city. And it just, there should be no place for it.
Well, we will be. We've got agenda setting tomorrow, so maybe what we can do is, is put in a conditional. Stephanie, maybe what we can do is make sure on our agenda, it would take, you know, we could actually even have an emergency effect. But I agree with you. I think everybody here agrees with you. And if, if we do find ourselves in this situation in which there's a vacuum in the law, we'll fill it.
So my other question is drugs in schools. You know, there, I'm not, I don't know what our schools, what the issues are with the drugs in our schools. I'm not saying that we have a problem. However, we used to have a program called DARE. I know that we don't have that anymore. I know some states still have that program. If we could stop children from ever using drugs, that would be the very best thing for our society. And are there any, does our school district allow our officers to go in and talk to, to students about drug use? And why it's not a good thing to start using drugs?
I would say we don't have like a formal program, but with our school resource officers, there's always mentoring and talking to kids. And I think there's informal discussions with students in classrooms with our officers. I think those things are occurring.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Stay safe.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Oh, Councilmember Walsh?
With any of these, you know, the, the sale of drugs is still, you know, prosecutable.
Yes.
And were any of these 50 drug offenses, were any of those for the sale of drugs?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We've done several stings, particularly when we had a problem with a particular motel. It was ongoing.
Okay.
Till we got it to stop.
All right. Thank you.
I get, you know, my first assignment at the King County Prosecutor's Office was in the felony drug unit, a unit that I don't believe in exists anymore. But most of the street level narcotic intervention has really been thwarted by these laws. And so that's the, you get the, the manufacturer of marijuana is illegal. But you know, we're, our, our efforts to combat street level narcotic use and possession is, has been thwarted, you know, in large part. But thank you. Okay, let's move on to the rest of my emerging issues in report. This Friday, delegation of the city of Federway and our business community and our Korean-American community will be heading to our, our two sister cities. Actually, Bill, can you go forward to? Sorry. We'll be headed to, first to Donghe, South Korea. It's been, I think, at least 18 years since we've been there. And we are leaving on Friday, April 21st. It's an 11-hour flight. The delegation, it will include myself, Councilmember Seppa Dawson, Councilmember Hong Tran, Councilmember Jack Walsh. Staff will be Tanya Carter, Chief Wong, Parks Director John Hutton, Pam and Bill from my office. And as well, we've got former Mayor, Mayor Emeritus, Mike Park, Chamber President Becca Martin, and Business Leader Mark Friedas, who is the, one of the original signatories on our sister city relationship with the city of Japan. And as well as we've got the Federway Korean-American Association. After a few days in Donghe, then we'll be, we're going to fly into Incheon, then head over to Donghe, which is on the east coast there. We're going to get a tour of the, what they call the Blue House, which is their equivalent of the White House. We're going to meet the regional governor in Seoul. Then we're going to head on over to Donghe, meet the, the mayor and the delegation there. And this is really about not just, not just community and, and not just the city governments, but also trade and make sure, that's why, also sporting events, that's why it's important our Parks Director is there. Then we'll fly into Tokyo on April 26th. And if, the agenda is pretty full. It's one after another, after, they're going to keep us hopping. And thank you, Pam, for all of your hard work and, and coordination. It's, it's a mountain of information. As well as Thomas, thank you very much for your coordination, making sure that our devices are going to be working and we're going to be able to hit the ground running. And then we're going to, in Hachinoa, Japan, our sister city for over two decades now, we'll be meetings with, in meetings with the mayor, city staff and business leaders. And we'll be there for, we're going to fly into Tokyo and then we're going to take the bullet train up to the, a two-hour bullet train, which at 200 miles an hour for two hours is roughly 400 miles north of Tokyo on the east coast to our sister city in Hachinoa. There's been an ongoing cultural exchange with our friends in Hachinoa. So it should be, and then we're back on the 29th. So we'll report back, but I think it's a very important, this is the first time that we have gone on a sister city trip in a decade and a half. Several members of the council that were, were present when we did that previously and we look forward to it. So a lot of hard work has gone into this. And, and what we want to do is make sure that, you know, we've developed trade partnerships and cultural exchanges and continue that. Mayor's emerging issues within, you can see here, we, myself and Bill Vedino from my office went to the Seattle Chamber Economic Forecast, was completed by an individual who works for the Federal Reserve. That was April 11th and the, at the Rainier Club in downtown Seattle. The individual to the right in the right picture is the CEO of Ivors, Bob Donigan. And the individual to the left in the picture was the Federal Reserve official who gave us an indication of what's going on. Of note, obviously, we had very concerning, about a month ago, the failure of the three banks in the United States that put everybody, you know, put everybody's feelers out in regard to, is this, is this the tip of something much bigger? And so we got some very encouraging forecast and news, specifically as it related to inflation and the concerns with inflation. And you could see at least where the trend is now from that graphic. We went right from that meeting to the next meeting, like minutes later, with, over at the city of Seattle, there's, on the upper right there, Seattle Mayor Bruce Harrell, a fellow Husky. He actually got to play a lot, but he's still nice to me. Anyway, we, we've got eight or nine mayors from the region that would sat down. The U.S. Conference of Mayors, a national organization with many of the largest cities in, in the nation and medium-sized cities, you know, gather regularly. They were meeting in this particular area. And so officials from Washington DC who are part of the actual organization of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, along with Bruce Harrell, who's very involved in that organization, sat down. And we were fortunate to have enough to have Congresswoman Suzanne Del Bene, who joined us in person as well as the representatives of several of our, both of our U.S. Senators and I think our representative, who's in the first, not who's on first, but who's in the, up, up north, Rick Larson. His representative was there as well. So it was great to hear the Congresswoman. It was great to also hear from our fellow mayors and talk about the issues affecting the region. And let's see, then we had a lot, Michicano, the, the ice cream, the Mexican-American ice cream location. If you haven't been there, it's right next to Billy McHale's. It's a really good, great location. They've really, it's, it's right in that area. And we had a great crowd there and lots of kids and lots of ice cream and, and I try not to have too much. Thanks, Bill, for holding me back. But it was a good, and the chamber always does a great job with ribbon cutting. So it's great to see people investing. Next slide. So then this week, actually tomorrow, we've got the Hampton Inn and Suites Grand Opening and ribbon cutting tomorrow on the 19th. The grocery, Grocery Outlet Bargain Market Ribbon Cutting over there on 21st and 312. It's finally filling a space that used to be held by a grocery store at that location. And they're going to open up at, I think 11:00 AM is when the event is for the ribbon cutting this Thursday, April 20th. We've got Parks Appreciation Day at Brook Lake and Town Square Park on the 22nd. Panther Lake Earth Day Litter Cleanup at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We've got the Farmers Market Opening Day on May 13th. Just want to put that on. And the nice thing about that is Rosen Team always put it the day of, well, actually on, yeah, May 13. They always do it the day before Mother's Day, which helps all of us out, though we know exactly where to buy our flowers. And so the key is to get there early though. And they've got, they've got some great florists there. And then we've got Touch a Truck. They, because we're utilizing the parking lot by the pack, it's been moved to Wild Waves and we're going to put some signs around town to make sure that everybody knows. And that's a great event for kids to where people can, you know, where the kids can see the big trucks and, and fire trucks and emergency vehicles and, and all of that. So that's my report. And let's go ahead and move on to the most important part of the evening, which is public comment. I'll call a few names up if you could, you know, queue up in the back. First, we have Anna Patrick, then Jan Barber, then Susan Strong, Nancy Justice, David Detzler. And that's what I've got so far. All right, Anna.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President and Council. So recently, Councilmember Norton proposed a comprehensive treatment plan involving four phases that could potentially provide an effective solution to the drug crisis in our city and beyond. However, there seems to be a lack of response to the proposal. While there are some reservations, we should still be taking the steps to look at the feasibility of this program for our city while addressing our concerns. If this is found to be feasible, we could ask King County to utilize the program, this program in their hotels and take action to combat the drug crisis more effectively. In addition, there is a standing concern about the accuracy of crime data being reported by the Federway Police Department. A group of citizens presented, and this was seven citizens, not an anonymous citizen. I'm not sure who this other person was in these other reports. But this was a group of citizens presented a document to the council members last year, including over 90 specific examples of crimes committed in 2021 that were suspected of potentially being miscategorized and under-reported to the FBI NiBers Crime Reporting Program. However, no corrective action was taken by the council, prompting that group of citizens to form a new formal group named Eye on Crime Federway. Evidence of under-reporting crime has been discovered and the council needs to take action by providing updated NiBers training for all officers and staff, instructing them to code crimes to the FBI standards and updating the FWPA, FWPD Code of Ethics to include a requirement to code crime to the FBI NiBers standard. Please make the results of the investigation transparent to the public. Finally, there have been discussions about school impact fees and their impact on housing. It has been suggested that increased fees resulting in a federal housing program that was all tax exempt. It's important to verify this information and get the facts. Furthermore, can the city change the city code so that any new multifamily housing or condos built here is specifically no greater than 20% tax-exempt low income and at least 80% market rate with 4,000 housing units already tax-exempt and another 11,000 housing. housing units on the way? We need to be proactive for a balance of incomes as well as a tax base that funds services. It's time for the council to take action and address these important issues. The drug crisis, accuracy of crime data and impact fees on housing all need attention from our elected officials. We need to work together to find effective solutions that benefit the community as a whole. We want action and we want you to speak to these issues. Thank you.
Ms. Patrick, we took action. We spent $50,000 for a report, and you heard today that nothing was found incorrect. So we did all, everything that was required of a transparent public agency, and we're not going to do anymore. Jan Barber.
Good, good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Susan Honda, and Council President Lynda Koshmar, and the other members of the council. A brief reminder that while April 22nd is Earth Day, we've also scheduled a breakfast. The Federalway Lions Club is hosting a breakfast at Jimmy Mack's Roadhouse, and we're going to have live music. And most recently, we signed up three sixteen-year-old step dancers from the Fire and Ice Studio. We're going to have a harpist playing. This is a fundraiser because in June, we have an event going on, on June Saturday, June 24th. We're going to be doing our Make Music Federalway Festival. And on the 21st, which is actually the solstice day, we have two or three events scheduled. One of them actually made the national press release, and that is our very own Jack Walsh is going to be singing outside the Nitrogen Sub-Zero Ice Cream Shop at 10:00 in the morning on, hopefully it's good weather, on June 21st. We're going to, at noon, we'll have some people over by the PAC, the Performing Arts and Events Center stair steps. You'll probably find the president of the Seattle Banjo Club, that would be Christopher Stone, and some other people, friends, will be there. And perhaps, Roger Flagar. And then we're going to be over at a barber shop, and perhaps we're going to have a barber shop quartet there. Still plans in the making. We hope that the music we can bring can warm people's hearts and give people a new way of looking at the talent and the joy that can be possible in Federalway. The Federalway Lions Club has done many different kinds of things with the city. We give away dictionaries to third graders. We have an enormous scholarship plan. And I'm glad to say Make Music has become a part as we enter our fifth year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, City Council Koshmar and council members. I'm Susan Strong from Federalway. I remember that rule. Tell you where I'm from. The topic of shopping carts is getting to be not much to talk about. The street people are aware that there's an ordinance that this is a theft, a class-three misdemeanor. They're finding other ways to pull their stuff around town, but we're glad to see that they're obeying this new ordinance, and thank you for passing that ordinance. My focus is now turning to the need we have for drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities as well as mental health facilities for the severely impaired. I've had the experience of talking to a few people living on the street. This is new for me, and I'm quite old for this experience. It is so frustrating to realize that we have nothing in our area to meet their needs. A few of us are finding a way to keep track of a couple of these homeless people. We're hanging in there with them until our leaders find a way to truly help these people. These people need lengthy, full-time treatment. When will our leaders care enough to build a treatment facility that is desperately needed? Are we going to be judged by the way we take care of our homeless, drug and alcohol-addicted residents of our city? Are the mentally ill going to pay the price of no one giving them the care they need? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Nancy Justice.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and President and Council. I'm Nancy Justice, Federalway resident, and I'm here on a positive note. I just want to share that last weekend, some people from stand-up Federalway community went out. We did our first-ever shopping cart scavenger hunt. We split up in teams and we covered the city. And as Susan said, we're not seeing a lot of carts out there, which is a good thing. But even so, we managed to pick up 24 carts, and they were returned to the businesses. And it was really a great day. We're very happy to do that. But now we need to rely on you and the ordinance that was put through to get the carts that have things in them off the streets. We've kind of done our part, and as Susan said, the word is getting out among them. But, you know, we need to now lean on the ordinance to make that better. And I did have a few questions that were from Chief's speech. I wanted to know what constitutes a homeless camp? Is there a definition?
Chief? Well, actually, why don't you go ahead and finish, that when you get all done, then he'll answer them.
Well, I'm pretty much on to questions, other than to say, stand-up community will be at the Parks Appreciation this weekend, and we're looking forward to help clean up.
Great. Did you have any other questions?
About the ordinance regarding the three strikes, I wanted to know how many people are currently or have been on a list actually utilizing this ordinance for what it was made for.
Are you talking about the drug laws?
I understand there was an ordinance. I don't know a number, but it was where someone got a warning and then they got three strikes, and then there was some type of punishment.
Okay. Well, we'll answer that. Do you have any other questions?
What constitutes the homeless camp and is the NIBR report available to the public?
Okay. So, Chief? What constitutes a homeless camp? Actually, thank you. You can, you can.
I would say somebody who is camping either on private property, and they're not wanted on that particular private property, or in a public place. Typically, a tent. Sometimes it's one tent, sometimes it could be multiple tents. But generally speaking, we work with property owners who, their desire is to have the illegal encampment be removed. So we provide resources and ask the people to move along if they don't want resources.
Okay. But where people are camping, where they put up a tent or they're in a particular area?
That's correct.
You know, kind of, yeah. And we had, you know, actually, even a few years ago, we had been to a point where we cleaned up several hundred of these throughout the town, sometimes having to go back repeatedly. There was a question about, remember what I was talking about before, about the prior law that was in effect when the legislature first fixed it, about that two prior, it was two prior warnings? Could you talk about that law and about the lack of a database for that?
Yeah, it's a state law. That we have to give two prior warnings, referral for treatment, before we can take enforcement for a misdemeanor offense. And the problem with that particular process is there's no way of knowing, the database isn't very good, so there's no way for us to really know how many warnings they've actually had. When we make contact with maybe drug users, we have no way of knowing this is their third offense. If they say, "I'm not identifying myself, and I'm just going to walk away," we have no crime to detain them.
All right.
It became a problem.
And it was disputed that the report that was submitted to us that prompted our investigation was anonymous. Was that report that was given to us, did it have someone's name on it?
Absolutely not. And it is available. Anybody can do a PDA and get a copy of that report.
A public disclosure request?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And then the investigation that was done?
That's correct.
Yeah, at our expense. Yeah, okay. All right. So, thank you very much. Hope that answers your questions. David Detzler.
My name is David Detzler, and I've been involved in scouting for approximately 25 years, the last ten of which, serving as a scout master of Troop 307 here in Federalway. And I would like to thank you, the city council, for the opportunity to talk about the value of scouting in Federalway, and why scouting is still one of the best character-building programs available for youth. I observed many kids in different programs, and none of them provide as many opportunities for personal growth, character development and life skills as scouting does. The mission statement of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical choices over their lifetime by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Law. Founded in 1910, BSA is an extremely challenging program, especially for those scouts who reach its highest accomplishment of Eagle. Scouting helps mold the future leaders of this country. I could go on about the many influential people who are Eagle Scouts, or the value that employers, military and schools place on youth who have participated in scouting. But tonight, I want to focus on my remarks on the three aims of scouting. The first aim of scouting is character development. These are found in the ideals of the Scout Oath and Law. Growth in moral strength and character and to reinforce ethical standards. Character is built through overcoming adversity, by rising up to challenges through the program. And character is developed through faith traditions. Scouting encourages young people to begin a spiritual journey through the practice of his or her faith tradition and works in conjunction with many youth programs. Character continues to grow through lifelong learning. Scouts have the opportunity to try new things, many of which they would not get to do otherwise: movie-making, architecture, game design, robotics. Advancement reinforces character development. For Cub Scouts ages five to 11, the Advancement Plan provides fun for the youth as they work on elementary-age adventures such as Pause for Action, a duty-to-country requirement; First Responder, an emergency preparedness requirement. For BSA scouting for youth, 11 to 18, the individual plans their advancement and progresses at their own pace as they meet each challenge, which helps them gain self-confidence and experience personal growth. There are over 150 merit badges that cover almost all topics a youth may have an interest in. But more importantly, Eagle-required merit badges build life skills that most youth won't get elsewhere: citizenship in the community, the nation, the world and society; communications, cooking; personal fitness, personal management; family life, first aid, emergency preparedness, environmental science. The second aim of scouting is citizenship, which means a youth's relationship and obligations to other people, to do your duty to God and country, and to help other people at all times. Adult mentoring builds positive relationships which have powerful impacts on youth lives, including scouts from single-parent families. Citizenship is experienced in the Cub Scout dens and scout patrols, and more importantly, through leadership. Serving others. Scouting has, from its inception, been deeply rooted in the concept of doing service for others. The Boy Scout slogan is "Do a Good Turn Daily." Scouting works through many volunteer organizations, city and state parks, to help young people appreciate and respond to the needs of others. BSA records an average between 60,000 to 80,000 service hours annually. Some of the things that Troop 307, a PAC 307, has done is we've done a half a mile trail for Des Moines, Memorial Day Flags, Veteran Cookie Package, and we are doing the Blueberry Park Service Day this Saturday. The third aim of scouting is fitness. Scouting helps develop all aspects of a healthy individual, including physical, mental and emotional fitness, through healthy living, outdoor activities and high adventure. PAC and Troop 307, along with the other PACs and troops in our community, want to support the city through the value of the program for youth, through community service and emergency preparedness support. But we need the community's support to enable that to happen. We need to let parents know about the program and how they can get involved through BeAScout.org. And to promote scouting, PAC and Troop 307 is having a field day on Saturday, May 13th, from 11:00 to 2:00, in the fields and campfires behind St. Luke's Church on 312. And I want to thank you all for your time and your support of scouting.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything else to say?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your service. Exactly. Do we have anybody online for public comment?
We do have a hand raised, Mayor.
And we do also have Councilmember Norton, who's appearing online as well. Hi, Councilmember Norton.
All right.
We have Robert Drake on the line. I think Thomas is unmuting him.
Okay.
Good evening, council. I'm calling to straighten out the record a bit of some inaccuracies I feel were stated tonight. By the way, that was a very angry and aggressive response to Anna Patrick, Mayor Farrell. Completely unprofessional, in my opinion.
Mr. Drake, turn off it. Mr. Drake, you can have your comment, but you are not going to engage in a debate here. What do you have to say?
The complaint, 168-page document given to two city council members in person over a year ago, six of us met in person, one was piped in via phone. The complaint was never anonymous. That's completely not true, in my opinion. We asked one council member who was present at that meeting to give all our names to council. According to the report, due to our complaint, many crimes had to be corrected that were not categorized correctly. Chief forgot to mention that. We are a group of citizens, by the way, who have always supported our local police departments. We have always supported law enforcement. We are very well-known to you all. We noticed what appeared to be downgrading and not recording crime to NIBR system accurately. I don't know, there are some training issues, there are other issues. I'm pretty upset at this point at the lack of transparency and inaccuracy that was spoken tonight. I'm also disappointed in the city council members, council president, that I was never, I just, I just won't be supporting again. We can only support truth and transparency. This isn't over. Good night.
Yeah, well, it's over for us, Mr. Drake. We spent $50,000 of taxpayer money to chase what was an unsigned report. All right. Any more public comment?
May I respond?
Yeah.
Bob, I was one of the council members you're talking about, and I did tell the other council members who I met with, the reason I believe that the mayor and the chief say it was an anonymous person was that there were no names in the report that you gave. But I did inform everyone, I gave everyone the report as I was asked to, and I told everyone who I talked with.
Right. All right. So that matter is laid to rest. Let's, any more public comment?
No, no one else.
All right, let's move on to presentations. We've got the ceremonial swearing-in of federalway police officers. Chief?
I want to first of all thank all the family members that are here to support these officers. Once we're done with this swearing-in ceremony, I think 80% of the room's going to empty out here. It is my pleasure to introduce to you and our residents the newest members of the Federalway Police Department. Mayor Farrell will give the oath of office. Each officer standing before you are entry-level police officer who recently graduated from the police academy. The officers are currently in our field training program. First, we have Officer David Pollak. David earned a Bachelor of Science degree in animal science from Washington State University. Before joining the city of Federalway, David worked as a money management coach and a teller for Harbor-Stone Credit Union, and as an office manager for VM Products. David graduated from the police academy on February 21st. Next, we have Officer Danny Eason. Before joining the city of Federalway, Danny worked as an operator for Junk Pros, as an owner-operator of Seaview Trucking, and as an owner of K&amp;J Incorporated. Other family members are now operating the businesses so that he can pursue his dream of being a police officer. Danny is fluent speaker of two languages, two other languages, Pakistani Urdu and Hindi. Danny is a graduate of the police academy on March 7th. Next, we have Officer David Next, we have Officer David Agapot. Before joining the City of Federal Way, David worked as a freight handler for FedEx, an inside-outside sales delivery driver for the Eastside Sawz and Sales, a shipping and receiving clerk for warehouse logistics services, and a sales associate for the Home Depot. Please join me in welcoming the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department. Officers, if you could poach the podium, the mayor will give you the oath of office.
Gentlemen, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I am David Pollak.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And I will, to the best of my judgment.
And I will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And as such, duties prescribed by law.
And as such, duties prescribed by law.
Congratulations. Well, congratulations, officers. Okay, we've got Port of Seattle, Seattle-King County Community Impact Fund Environment and Sustainability Grants for 2023. We've got Port of Seattle Environmental Grants Program Coordinator, Elise Aiden.
Thank you. Good evening. And you pronounced my name just perfectly, so.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Elise Aiden. I am at the Port of Seattle, and I'm managing our environmental grants program. So this evening, I'm just gonna give you an update on some of the projects that are happening in Federal Way, and then some upcoming things that we would love to work with the city and city staff members on as better partnership. So this is actually a picture of the Federal Way Korean American Association did get a grant with us to help their funding for the park that they're building. It's called Hanwari Korean Garden, and they have a five-year plan, so it's great to hear that you'll be visiting the sister city as they're partnering with them on the plans of the park. So an overview of our impact fund. It was launched in 2019 by the Port Commission, really to develop these equity-based partnerships. We recognize the impact that we make in the region, especially in our environment. So we have three portions of our fund. We support small businesses under our economic development team, and then we have an economic recovery grant program that we launched once COVID hit to support organizations that would like to train folks in jobs. And then I manage, as I mentioned, the environmental grants program, and we currently just completed our cycle-three funding, where we funded five organizations for the next three years. So about the fund, we do work within six cities: Burien, SeaTac, Des Moines, Federal Way, Normandy Park, and Taquilla. And we fund organizations to do projects for up to $20,000. And then we offer now a multi-year fund, so we can have more sustainable projects, and we have that as a 60,000 cap over three years. We do have a three-to-one match requirement, but good news today, the House -- we were able to -- the Washington State Legislature was able to adopt the engrossed House Bill 1086 to lower that three-to-one barrier to two-to-one, essentially making it easier for organizations to meet the requirement that any public improvement contract that we give, you don't have to have another extra $40,000 to receive our 20,000. Now, moving forward, hopefully, once Governor Inslee signs the bill, that it could be 20,000 with our 20,000, lowering the barrier for a lot of our community organizations that don't have a big budget, but really work around getting volunteers out to do public improvements. So we're really excited about that opportunity coming up. So the three organizations that I wanted to mention to you were Federal Way Korean American Association. As I mentioned, they are in their Phase II of the Hanwari Garden. They currently are building out the garden with the sister city and creating all the plans and design. And that's really gonna help, including a pavilion that they're putting together, that's really gonna be a gathering space for communities to get together. Then we have African Young Dreamers Empowerment Program. They're working with Black and African immigrant youth to steward and restore parks in both Federal Way and Des Moines. And so they're funded at 60,000 as well. They're currently working -- doing work parties at Wildwood Park, and then also Sanju Park in Des Moines. And they generally work with about 30 young folks ages 16 to 24. This is also a way for them to engage youth, give them hope, you know, mental health issues, and then provide pathways to green jobs and workforce development. And then we've got Tilt Alliance. They're gonna continue their year-long environmental training program. They're working with King County Housing Authority at the Southridge House Senior Housing Area to build community gardens with seniors, so they can get outside and have more accessible gardening and food access. So those are the three organizations, and they'll be funded for another two more years. They just completed their first-year work. And so for next steps, we do have an environmental and job symposium happening at Highline College, where we're really hoping to get some of our presenters, like African Young Dreamers, will be doing a presentation to community members about their work. We're hoping to have an opportunity for folks to connect, to partner, so that they're not working in silos, but they can build their community service work together. That'll be coming up June 3, and I'd love to share that with you all. We're gonna get that invite out. And then we have a community capacity-building consultant, and this consulting company is really helping us be more connected to our city partners, our park staff members, so that we're keeping track of what are the priorities that our cities are having that we can align with better. And then we will start our summer community liaison outreach. We did have two liaisons from last year that were residents of Federal Way, so we're hoping to continue getting outreach to folks in Federal Way. We unfortunately didn't have any new applications from Federal Way organizations, so I'm really wanting to connect with the city's Parks Department to see where there might be a gap. And that brings us to we'll be launching our cycle-four in September funding. So this is kind of the next six months. We're hoping to really get the word out and increase applications that we're getting. So, that's about it. Any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Sepadossen?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation, and I wanted to say thank you for the Southridge-King County Housing Authority, because I've seen with other communities where the seniors are -- I have gardens. They really congregate around there. They chat. There's a community-building component to it, so I really appreciate that that's happening. Actually, my day job is at King County Housing Authority, so it's personal. But a question for you. You were talking about the two-to-one matching fund, but when you were using examples, you said for 20,000, you would give 20? So is it 20 to 10, or is it really 20 to 20?
Oh, sorry. So currently, that three-to-one for every 20,000, they have to come up with another 40,000 in either matching dollars. We also have tree values, so for every tree that they plant, it could be adding $2,000 because we measure the lifetime of the tree. We also use a value of volunteering. Right now, I think the state is around $34 for each volunteer, and then educational hours. A lot of these organizations do use an educational component, but that sometimes adds a lot more work to these organizations that don't necessarily have capacity. So now that we can bring it down to a 20,000 to 20,000 match, it's gonna increase the amount of applications and make it easier for us to, like, get people to understand the importance of the public improvement without them feeling like this is a burden, an extra work for them.
So it's basically one-to-one?
It's one-to-one. Yeah, the language in the bill was -- it kind of messed us up, too. But now it'll be -- it'll still be two-to-one, but it's one-to-one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counsel President.
So thank you very much for the -- I believe the Port is granting 20,000 to the Hanwari Garden.
Yes.
By the Aquatic Center. And that's what our council members will be doing, is going over to Honshinoy Japan to ask for another part of the money to bring it back for the garden. So thank you very much for your part in that. Thank you.
And we also work with multicultural sustainability movement, which is also one of the partners. They're working with seniors who are in Korean communities, and so they're partnering with them as well to help build out the park in the next few years. So, yeah, I'm really excited to see how that comes about.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Elise.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Thanks for the work you do. Okay. Now, moving on to council committee and regional committees. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, Councilmember Walsh.
All right. Saturday, Parks Appreciation, 9 to noon. Be there. Be there. Be there. Blueberry Farm Park or Town Square Park. We met last week, a week ago tonight, and Items G and H on the consent agenda came out of that meeting, and will be not meeting again until next month. Also, non-parks-related, but while there's still a few people here, E.M. Tongi did really well on this last week, and I think he's gonna be moving on. So anyway, he did great.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Land Use and Transportation, Councilmember Dovey.
Yeah, just a couple things. I'll announce this probably twice tonight. On May 1, May Day, we're gonna have our LUTC meeting. And then on May 20, Marine Hills' annual 60th anniversary for their parade will happen in Federal Way. That's not really land use, but it goes by the street by where I live, so it's on the land. Anyway, those are two things I'd announce. May Day, we have our next land use meeting. We've got a lot of things coming up that we will hear about tonight, probably with Keith and his presentation, but there's a lot going on there. Thank you.
All right. Fedrec, Finance and Economic Development, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be on April 25 at 5:00 p.m. in this room. Councilmember Jack Dovey will facilitate that meeting on my behalf. Thank you.
Lodging Tax Advisory -- thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sepadossen.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a really robust and good meeting last week, and I just wanted to announce that Hampton Inn is having their ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow at 4:00. And I'm bringing it up because the manager there is actually a member of the LTAC. And with that, our next meeting is gonna be on May 10 at 10:00. And with that, I end my report. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. The Association of Washington City's Annual Conference is in Spokane from June 20 to 23, and registration opens tomorrow, the 19th. So if you're interested in going, let Amy know. The sooner we register, the sooner we have a chance of getting into the host hotel, which there were actually two this year, but the closest one is the one we want to be in. And that should be an interesting conference. It's always great to get -- to be able to work with other councils in cities in the state of Washington. I attended the Skateboard, which is the transportation committee, this morning, and we had two speakers. One was Julie Timm. She's a new CEO of Sound Transit. And the other speaker was Michelle Allison, who is the new CEO of Metro, or the general manager. I was able to ask Ms. Tim about the Federal Way Link Extension, as that was one of her major topics of discussion, and the OMF-South, as that was one of her other major topics of discussion. My concern was the Bellmore Park residents who will be affected by light rail going through the property there, and when those folks will be told if their homes will be taken for the construction of the light rail. And I've asked numerous Sound Transit people over the last year about that, but I thought the CEO might have a better answer, and she did not. She doesn't know, but as soon as she does know, she will be sure and let the Bellmore Park people know. The sooner the better. And OMF-South is moving along, but has run into some issues that will make -- it'll be longer before it's built. I asked the Metro General Manager, Ms. Allison, about safety on buses and security on buses, because that's something I hear about, concerns about quite often, and especially drug use on buses and Sound Transit trains. And she said that if you ever felt unsafe on a bus, or even on Sound Transit, you can talk to the operator, or you can dial 911. The operator has the authority to stop the bus immediately, open the windows, and call himself for security. That nothing is allowed to be smoked on a bus, period. And they are doing a pilot program with the University of Washington on the Metro buses to test the quality of the air on the buses. And that will be done this spring, to see if there is a level that's not safe for people to be on buses. They do not think that that's what they're gonna find, but they want to test it to make sure. So that was great to know that from the managers of those departments. I also -- tomorrow or on Thursday will be a Board of Health meeting, and we will be having a report on overdose trends and responses in King County, and a state legislative update. And tomorrow is a Regional Transit Committee meeting, and we'll be talking about Metro's service recovery plan and their zero emissions fleet. The PIC meeting was last week. There was a lot of discussion about the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services levy renewal, which is coming up. The King County Council Budget Committee talked at length about it yesterday and did move it forward. So that should have much more discussion. And I wanted to also talk a little bit about what happened last week down on the Tide Flats, and my thanks to the mayor and to Kevin Pelley, our emergency director. I grew up in Tacoma, and I crossed the Tide Flats every day for six years to go to school. And you know that the Tide Flats are a source -- there's a lot of things down there that could cause a lot of issues for the City of Federal Way and the people who live here and work here. And in, you know, in 2016, they tried to build a methanol plant down in the port, in the Tide Flats. And Councilmember Maloney and I led the fight to stop that. The council got involved, the mayor got involved, the staff got involved, and it stopped. It didn't happen, not because of us, but I do believe that we were part of not having that happen. When this ship caught on fire last week, it was the second ship in two years to catch on fire down in the Tide Flats. And my concern has always been that the Tide Flats, if there's something that happens down there, it will affect us more than it will affect most people in Tacoma. I was -- when I contacted the mayor about my concerns, he immediately was -- he was already on it. He took care of it. Kevin Pelley is in the back. He's our new emergency manager, and he'd been on it all day. And my hope is that instead of waiting for Pierce County to contact King County and, you know, I'm hoping that when there's an emergency down there, we are the first that's contacted, because it's going to affect us. It's not going to affect most people in Tacoma. It will affect us. And I have every faith that between the mayor and Mr. Pelley, that things will be moving along and that we will be in the direct line of contact for the next emergency down there. So thank you very much for your work. It happened on a Sunday. I know you stopped on your way home from church. I appreciate that. And, yeah, the mayor always does contact me when I contact him on Sundays, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Yeah, we were very fortunate. And thank you, Kevin, for the great work and the coordination. And we just happened to have the, the Greater Federal Way Emergency Management Managers Meeting last week where we talked about that very issue and making sure, Kevin's going to be looking into what, sort of a, an inventory of the dangerous chemicals that are down there, protocols for, for what we do in case a plume rises and heads our way, and also for the very quick action in regard to the code red, where we notified entire sections of our community that this was going on. So thank you very, very much for the call, and thank you, Kevin, for your fast work as well. So we endeavor to keep the council in, up to date as well. So, thank you. Council President.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I'll pick up some of the things that haven't been discussed yet. Tomorrow morning, Councilmember Honda and I will be meeting with the school board directors, two of them, Director Jones and Director Phillips, discussing topics of mutual interest. And I believe one of the topics will be the school impact fee. So that's, in case you have anything you'd like us to bring forward with that. On Saturday, April 22nd, while you're all in, on the way to Korea, we will be having Make Music. So get up in the morning, go to 8:00, go over to Jimmy Mack's Roadhouse for breakfast with the Make Music folks. And then at 8:45, if you go over to the National, Federal Way National Little League Field over by the Aquatic Center, they'll have their grand opening jamboree for the spring, 8:45 AM. And then after that, 9:00, we'll go over to the parks for their downtown park or the Blueberry Farm to, to work on our parks. Thank you very much, Councilmember Walsh, for reminding us for the 50th time. And then be, I'll be attending a Master Builders Association briefing on housing issues. Now, housing issues are a big topic for us because of what the legislature has been proposing. And that'll be on April 26th. So after April 26th, I'll be able to bring a, a report back for you. And there's one other thing I just want to state that I, with regard to the neighbors, the numbers, I think that there's an honest disagreement with the numbers. And it's, it's hard to get your hands on, and I would invite anybody who's concerned about that to please call me for coffee and let's talk about it. We, we've tried to get into it. We did have a meeting where we invited one of the folks, for sure, that gave us the first request, and, but that person didn't come to our meeting at City Hall. And so if anybody would like to discuss those numbers, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Now, let's move on to consent agenda. These items have already gone through committee and can be passed all at once, but once I read them, I'll ask if an item would be, want to be polled by a council member for separate consideration. Item 7A, the minutes for the April 4, 2023, regular and special meeting minutes. B, resolution intent to renew the Steel Lake Management District, S L M D, number one, and setting of a public hearing date of June 6, 2023. Item C, Pollution Prevention Assistance Partnership, authorization to apply for inter-agency agreement. Item D, 21st Avenue South, the 320th Street signalization of pedestrian improvements, authorization to bid. Item E, authorization to accept Conservation Futures Tax Levy, C F T grant. Item F, Dish Wireless LLC Site Lease Agreement, Lakota Park. G, 2023 Diversity Commission Work Plan. H, Fiscal Year 2022, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, Grant Award Acceptance Memorandum of Understanding, M O U. Counsel, are there any of these items that you would want for separate consideration? All right. Councilmember Coachmar, do you have a motion?
Thank you. Well, Council President Coachmar.
Council President Coachmar. What did I say?
It doesn't matter.
Oh.
I'm here.
Council President Coachmar.
I move approval of the consent agenda items A through H.
A second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Councilmember Norton?
I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right. Item 8, Council Business. Item A, TC 3, Letter of Intent to Award, Initiation of Development Agreement, Staff Report by Keith Niven, our Community Development Director. Keith?
Good evening, Mayor. Council President Coachmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, and City Council Members. Okay. So this evening, we're here to talk about the city-owned Town Center 3 property, also known as the old Target site, immediately next to the Performing Arts and Events Center. So the policy question in front of the City Council is, should the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the letter of intent to award with One Trent, that is the developer, and authorize the initiation of a development agreement? Per city code, that's that section below 1985-040, working on a development agreement requires City Council authorization. So we're asking for two things this evening. Enter into the letter of intent to award and start the development agreement negotiation process. So from a process standpoint, in March of 2022, the city sent out a request for proposals for an architecture firm to develop a land plan for us, for the property, to give us some insights into what to do there. Part of that was to also include an economic consultant to make sure that whatever plan they came up with was marketable could actually get built. We put together a panel which included Council President Coachmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, to hear the interviews of the consulting firms that brought forward ideas for the property, and ultimately, we chose Via Architecture from Seattle. And they partnered with Leland Consulting, an economic firm out of Portland. So from there, they put together a plan, which is that vignette you see in the lower left-hand corner. And in November of 2022, the council basically got a presentation on the plan and recommended that we move forward looking for a developer to actually bring the plan to life. So we sent out a request for proposals at the beginning of the year, and we received six different proposals from developers. You can see the names of those developers on the slide here. We went through a vetting process. We reached out to the community over the year to talk to them about the, the project and the property. And at the end of the day, the recommendation coming back for you all is for us to move forward with One Trent. And there's reasons why One Trent kind of lifted above the others. One is that they, although there's a lot of housing being proposed here, they also proposed some ownership housing. So there will be about 50 townhouses that will be built as part of their development plan, and those will be townhouses which will be sold to folks to allow for some ownership opportunities in our downtown. They also are engaged with the city right now in evaluating whether or not a hotel can be put on the property. And that is something that if ultimately that study comes back and says, yes, a hotel is viable, they will then include that in their development to actually build that hotel. They are building, they are partnering with the city in the construction of the Plaza and public parking garage for the PAC. And at the end of the day, they, they've got a, a 20, up to 24,000 square feet of retail use on the ground floor. So this was, this was really the best proposal that the city got, and, and we actually think that this is a very good proposal. Here's a blow up of the, the proposal that they, they gave us. Here's some renderings of what that plaza space will look like. The PAC is basically down at the bottom end of this slide, so this is looking east. This is where the old Target building sits right now, so there'll be a big public space and a pavilion building. And I don't know if we want to talk about that tonight.
Let me just interrupt real quickly. We, we heard from Congressman Adam Smith's office today and received that the results of our trip back there have yielded landing on one of his 15 items to, a request to the Appropriations Committee to get $2.5 million for that. And so that is part of our congressman's specific request in the district. And so the fact that it landed on that list is really good news for us.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes. Go ahead.
Do we need to do anything further to make sure we get that funding?
Right. To, to shepherd that through appropriations. I'm going to get back to that. Councilmember Dovey?
And I think that's exciting news. I just want to make sure, and maybe you'll say this, Keith, we mentioned to the congressman it's going to be 40,000 to 50,000 square feet that we're looking to build into that common area for a community something. What do I call it? Community, yeah.
I think that's, I, I think that that rendering right there is based on, I think, 10. And so, yeah, so I, I actually, there's some discussion about exactly what it'd be, but yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll talk with our economist, with our, with Bill Vodino and, and folks to make sure that we and our federal lobbyists to shepherd that. All right.
And, and, and we'll get to that in a second. There, there is another, this story is only half-written at this point. Again, more, more pictures of what this, this kind of new public space will look like, you know, really envisioning it as a, as a gathering place for our, our community in addition to Town Square Park. The mayor's recommendation is to approve execution of the letter of intent to award and commencement of the development agreement. So that's really what I would say is, you know, the next step is we sit down with the developer and we start to really negotiate, you know, what the city really wants on this property, what they want, and ultimately, we come up with a contract. And, you know, as Councilmember Dovey mentioned, there is this desire for a bigger community space on that property, and I think we're exploring alternatives to see if we can make that happen as well. This is, this is kind of an opportunistic time for all of us to get all of our wants on the table. So with that, I am done and here to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Sephedosan and the Deputy Mayor.
Yes. Thank you so much. It looks great, and I really like the rendering. Right now, as I'm looking at, I've seen it before, but when I'm looking at this, at it on the screen, the buildings are just blocks.
Yes.
So is there going to be like a mixture of glass and something that's more airy and open? Because otherwise, it just looks very enclosed.
Yes. The reason why that those renderings were shown as just kind of block buildings was to not take your focus away from really the, the town, the, the public space. The buildings themselves will have, you know, we have some draft design guidelines for downtown, which talk about the use of brick and natural stone. You know, our expectation is for kind of an elevated design to kind of set it apart from the rest of the city. That will be part of the negotiation that we have with the developer to make sure that the architecture that is incorporated into that area is something that is, I think, in the best interest of our community. So we will definitely have an eye on that, but details to come in the future.
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Of course.
I would love to suggest that maybe you could present this to the Youth Commission.
Okay, absolutely.
So we hear their input, or if they have any, because as we have interviewed several Youth Commission members, I think it would be great to have their input and to also make them feel like they were involved in the process.
I would be glad to do that. So we'll figure out when that meeting can happen and definitely do that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I would just want to thank Keith and his staff for all the work that they've done. We have been meeting as a downtown, I don't know what we call ourselves, but we're a committee. We meet on Fridays and, or Thursdays, depending on the month. And staff has just put in a tremendous amount of work on this. It's very, very exciting to see this, see something happening on that piece of property. And, you know, I'd like to see it done tomorrow, but I know it'll take several years. I mean, good things take time to develop, and we, we will all be patient and let good things develop there. So thank you very much for your leadership. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the, the next thing that's going to happen on that property is we're going to tear down the old Target. E J, when does that happen? Soon? Yeah. So we're going to have, we're going to make an event out of that because we've been looking at that empty Old Toys R Us for a long time. That building's going to come down, and this is, this is going to be great. So.
Target. The Toys R Us is where the PAC is.
God, what, what, what's wrong with me today? Thank you very much. Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
And I was just also going to thank Keith and his, his team for the great work that they've, they've done on this. I mean, I'm, I'm impressed with the, with the work they've done and truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman Dovey?
I'm going to pile on to what Deputy Mayor said and Councilmember Walsh, that this has been a very, very good process. We've had, I don't know, meetings, Thursdays or Fridays for a long time, and Keith and his team did a great job working through this, getting to this point. I mean, we've still got a lot to do, but I'm convinced it's in the right hands, and I'm, you know, as long as we don't tweak too many things, we'll have it built sooner than later.
That's right. Council President?
Thank you, Keith, for all you've done.
So the whole way we get this through the appropriations process in DC with Congressman Smith and Senator Murray and Senator Cantwell is that our legislators, every month, you get a letter from us that says, this is our project, shovel ready, and this is what we've asked for. And then when it gets through each committee, it, it can die in each committee. So if you keep on top of it with each committee, they won't drop it and will continue until. We get it.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Let's see here. Council President Coachmar, do you have a motion?
Aye. My gosh, I think I do. I move to authorize the mayor to execute the letter of intent to award and associated agreement with One Trent and authorize initiation of development agreement negotiations.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Keith, thank you. You know, before Keith was Community Development Director, I actually gave him the, he came up with some ideas on how to move forward with this, and that is, that was sometime last year, is that right, Keith?
Yeah, it was about March, about a year ago.
Yeah, exactly, a year ago. And this is how far we've come in just a year. So things are really taking off. So thank you, Keith, for your vision and your hard work.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. All right. Now we are on to item B, under 8B, Repair of Opticom Preemption System, a staff report from E J Walsh, our Public Works Director. E J?
This is not nearly as exciting.
But important.
But it is important. So, good evening. My name is E J Walsh. I'm the Public Works Director, as the mayor said. So tonight, I am before you in regards to the Opticom system, which is the Traffic Signal Preemption System. In short, what that is, is it's the transmitter system that everything from fire trucks, ambulances, to police cars, to our snowplows use to preempt the lights. So as they're approaching intersections, if the intersection is red, they have a transmitter in the vehicle that will turn this traffic signal in the direction that the vehicle is traveling green to allow traffic to clear out in front of it and hold all the traffic from the other directions. Our system was installed primarily in the late 1990s, and other than cleaning sensors and replacing the actual activation light bulbs that come on, we've done pretty much no maintenance to it. And it's had some significant failures in, in the recent past that has necessitated some upgrades to replace components that have failed since the 1990s. It's electronics. It's a much slower process, but it's, you know, this is very similar to your cell phone that over time, it just slowly doesn't work as well as it did when it was new. So we have a little over 80 intersections. We are not fixing all of them. We are only fixing the ones that have failed, which the key corridors that they are on, we have several intersections on PAC Highway, and we have three on 320th, two on 348th, and two on First Avenue that all have failed equipment. So, and what, you know, in, in, from the public's perspective, the system will do two things. If, if it can, it will preempt the system, which allows, you know, police cars can accelerate and decelerate very quickly, so they don't get quite the same level of benefit as a fire truck does. So, you know, a fire truck's 80,000 to 100,000 pounds. It takes time to slow down and then accelerate back up, which has an impact on response times. The Opticom system documented nationwide, not just in Federal Way, decreases the response time of a responding emergency vehicle by 25%. So it's a significant, when the ambulance is trying to get to your house, it's a significant amount of time. It also reduces crashes of emergency vehicles by 70% in intersections. So it's a public safety device that truly, you know, keeps our first responders safe as well as the community. The one thing, and everyone that is authorized to use the system is very well versed in this, but the one thing to share with the council and the public, it will not preempt a pedestrian phase. So if someone walks up and actually pushes the crosswalk button, it will not change it to them being stranded in the middle of the street. The, the signal will hold. And if you've been trained with the Opticom system, you know that if the light turns
that if the light turns, it starts flashing at you, and the signal stays red, that's, it's telling you there's a pedestrian in the intersection. So it actually provides pedestrian safety as well. So to fix the equipment that has been broken, the repair cost is $85,000. So that is what we are here tonight asking for authority. That way we can start getting parts ordered to move ahead with getting the system back online. I'm going to phone a friend and ask Steve to talk about the budgeting side of this.
Next week at FedRec, we will be bringing our first quarter's budget amendment, and of course that will come to council for a budget ordinance requiring two hearings. If you recall from the budget process, we had over 100 unfunded budget requests, and we have been prioritizing and making sure that we're current with those. And for something to rise to the top of the list, it has to fit four criteria. It has to be important, it has to be urgent, it has to be something that's an existing obligation, something that's not new, and it, and it's something that doesn't have funding, funding any other way. And of course, this fits all of those criterias. It's urgent enough that they want to move ahead with it. As far as where the funding is coming from, I'll bring a full report of all of our first quarter revenues, but I can tell you that the easiest one to describe is our investment revenue. We budgeted cautiously, conservatively, and rates have risen. So our investment revenue is ahead of budget by 300,000. So I want to give you some comfort that you can approve this, and we will bring you the full first quarter budget amendment to FedRec, and it'll come to council.
Very good, thank you. Could you talk about your conversation with Kevin Crossen with the Fire Department?
Sure. So there was, I guess, two weekends ago, there were three calls for service to the Fire Department that involved transing through 288th and PAC Highway, and that is one of the intersections that this system is not functional, and it had a direct impact on their response. So Monday morning, he showed up in my office, and turned, I showed up in the Mayor and Brian's offices. And, you know, that is kind of what the press precipitated us showing up to council and kind of raising the priority. You know, similar to streetlights and traffic signals, these are used by other agencies, namely South King Fire, but they're the city's equipment, it is the city's functionality. So it is our responsibility to keep these systems operational. So unfortunately, we can't really ask other agencies to pay for it, it's our responsibility. But that, as the mayor pointed out, South King, specifically one of the deputy chiefs, showed up in my office saying, this is not working, and that's where we are now here.
And that was just last week. So thank you very much for pulling this together and getting it on the agenda. Thank you also to council for letting us walk this on. Council, any other questions? Council President? Oh, okay. You're just ready. Okay, any other questions before I call for the motion? All right, Council President?
I move to authorize staff to have repairs to the Opticon Preemption System completed.
Second.
Sir, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Youth Commission appointment, Councilmember Walsh.
I move appointment to appoint Winston, Wen to the Youth Commission as a voting member for a term to expire August 31, 2025.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold on. Deputy Mayor?
I would just like to thank Winston for coming in today. When we did interviews two weeks ago with spring break, and he was out of town, so thank you for, and for council and staff for making it possible so that we could interview him today and get him on the Youth Commission before the end of the school year.
All right, thank you. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there a, we've already asked for a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. All right, now, the second meeting of the month, we start at Council Position 7. Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I will say again that the Marine Hills 60th Anniversary Parade is on May 20, the same day as Touch a Truck, so my grandchildren will get to do two fun things in Federal Way when they arrive from Germany. So we'll be there. I did want to bring up something that I noticed the other day. I don't know if anybody else has, but we have a series of plugs on the side of the road by trees, and I couldn't figure out why people were congregating around a bus stop and a series of trees on our highway or on PAC Highway, and then I realized they were plugged in and charging their cell phones. And so, I don't know if it, it's great that we have plugs for people who can't charge cell phones on the street, but when you drive by at 6:30 in the morning and 7:00 in the morning, and you wonder why all these people are gathering at bus stops and trees around the city, we might want to look at, we're actually asking them to congregate because they have no place to charge their cellphone. So we hear about shopping carts, and we hear about people gathering and being on sidewalks where maybe they shouldn't all be at the same time. I think one of the things is we encourage people to charge their cell phones on our city streets at these junctions. I don't know if anybody else has seen that, but it dawned on me when I drove by the other day, I couldn't figure out why seven, it wasn't seven, three people anyway were by a tree by the old Albertson's, which is now the Hispanic Market.
Right, interesting. EJ?
So they were originally installed to put festival lights on the streets.
I figured as much.
Originally, all of them are off, or they're supposed to be off.
They must not know that they don't charge phones.
So I will tell you, we routinely have that conversation.
Okay.
But, you know, that being said, they are controlled by breakers in the traffic signal cabinets, so I'm happy to talk to, if someone sees that, please call it in, or I'll, I'll touch base with you after the meeting, council member. And we will have staff go out and make sure that that breaker didn't somehow get turned back on. But it's a little bit of a legacy system that we've been slowly removing as we've been switching to the festival lights up on the light poles.
Yeah, which is a great thing. I remember when Council President Kochmar talked about all those, the things that we do with our trees and many years ago with the festival lights and the baskets and all that, so. The other thing is I wanted to, back in the old days, not that long ago, we were talking about ARPA funding, and we talked about, what do I want to say? Teaching people how to manage finances and things. I met with a group today that's coming forward, they've been teaching financial management in Federal Way for 20 years, and they want to see if they can help us do that, so more to come on that. And then the stolen cars thing, we all know that's a problem, so I'm encouraging us to look at ways that we can help people not lose their most precious asset when that's how they get to work. So, anyway, that's my report, and thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Saturday, 9:00 noon.
Exactly, be there. All right, Councilor Tran?
I really want to be there, except I have some other duties, so.
You know, I have that same thing. This will be the, only the second time in 18 years that I have not been there. But I think that you, me, the mayor, and Lydia will be kind of the other side of the world, a little far.
Exactly, that's right.
Remember to take your headsets for all the movies you're going to watch.
Right, that's right. Okay, thank you. Actually, I may have to borrow one of my son's. Ben, if you're watching, I'll have to borrow one of yours. Councilmember Sephardosson? Oh, no, actually, Councilmember Norton. Okay, Councilmember Norton? Councilmember Norton, time for your report.
I'm sorry.
That's good.
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. All right, and Councilmember Sephardosson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report, except to say that I'm looking forward to this trip and for the exchange that we're going to have with our sister cities.
Yeah.
And like you said, it has been a while, and they've been here a couple of times, so I think it's a good reciprocation of duties, and also understanding or learning from them what we can do here and/or how we can engage better if we're going to have Sister Cities. So I'm really excited about this trip and looking forward to everything we can bring back to Federal Way, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So I want to address something that Mr. Drake said, because I feel like I was actually being targeted there. About a year ago, Mr. Drake and I think four or five other people met with Councilmember Walsh and myself, and they presented us with a report of some concerns that they had with different cases with the police department. It was on a disc, and so I took the disc as the deputy mayor, and I talked with every council member, I told them who we met with. They got a copy of the report, as did the mayor, as did the police chief. We held, we tried to hold some meetings with the folks who, who wrote the report here in this room, and they were invited, they, they didn't come for various reasons, but what was requested was that we hold a private investigation into the report, which was done. And as a council, we had nothing to do with that, and I wasn't asked about, I hold the disc, but I wasn't asked, the investigator never talked to me, as I have nothing to do with the police department. So anyway, I would encourage all council members to, to please talk with this group, they're still active, they send us emails every day, and so please talk to them. I think they want to be heard, and I think they want to hear from council members, so please, please talk to them. You know, I think our police department does a good job. I think there's a misunderstanding somewhere, and hopefully it can be worked out, but our police department does a good job. The investigation was thorough, it took months and months and months, much longer than I, I expected it to, because it was a thorough investigation, so I just wanted to clear that up. I did as I was asked at that meeting, and that's all I could do. So our nonprofits work really, really hard in Federal Way to make Federal Way a better place to be, and I would encourage folks, if you want a breakfast on Saturday morning before you go work in the park, or go to the Little League, or go to whatever you're going to do on Saturday, to go to have breakfast, $10. Make Music Group gets $5 of that $10, and that is one of the only ways that they make money. They don't have any other way of making money, they don't charge for their programs, they bring music to Federal Way, which always makes people feel better. So if you can support them in any way, that would be great. Next Saturday, the 28th, on, oh, actually, next Friday on 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00, Pacific Christian Academy is holding their auction. Tickets are $40 a person, and the proceeds benefit school scholarships, school programs, and general school needs. This is a school that's in the Christian Faith Center, and they are looking for a new location. So if you know a building that can host 300-plus kids, and they have a waiting list for next year already, so they're doing obviously a good job in our community. It would be awesome to have a community calendar. So many nonprofits do things, wouldn't that be cool? Because, and maybe as a city, we could start that, but, you know, the newspaper used to have a section, a community section where it was the community calendar, you could put things in there. If you read it, that was great, but they don't do that anymore, and after an event, I will, somebody will generally say to me, well, I didn't know that was happening, I wish I knew that was happening, I would have supported it. It's really hard as a nonprofit, I'm in two of them, well, actually, three, to get the word out that we are having a fundraiser, that we're having an event that may or may not be a fundraiser, but it's really hard to get that word out. So if we could have someplace where groups could send their information to us, and then we could have, you know, maybe put it on our Facebook pages or our website or something so that people would know where to go to look to see what's happening in Federal Way. I think it would be really great. I know it would take staff time, but I really think it would be a benefit to everyone who lives and works here, and to those groups that are making a difference in Federal Way. And I would just encourage people to vote for him, he sounded really great. You know, I don't know much about music, I know what I like and what I don't like, and I like his voice, he sounded really great, so, so support him. Let's make sure he wins American Idol and comes back to Federal Way and, and stays here for a while, before he goes back to Hawaii. Thank you.
Very good. Council President?
Well, I think with the neighbors' reporting, I think part of the problem with that whole issue is when a crime is reported initially, you know, there's initial response by whomever is reporting it, and then sometimes later on, it may be incorrect, it changes because what was thought to be an initial report, or initial person, or initial whatever, changes as more people have input. It may be incorrect on that, but I think part of our problem is, in the reporting system itself, it's difficult to have a correct number in everybody's mind, and so that's what we're trying to address. So I want to say good luck, having been to Korea and Japan three times, it's a long flight. I remember getting off the plane thinking I was going to die, when we went up around the mountains, up the hillside, to the Demiluzae Zone, DMZ Zone. I mean, this is guys in army fatigues with long rifles patrolling the border between North and South Korea. So, I mean, I can handle that, but I couldn't handle was the, going through the mountains, and I got sick. So, but at any rate, the Korean folks were just absolutely gracious, but both in Korea and Japan, if you have a punch bowl and there's purple punch, please don't drink it. Or very, very, soju, 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 so, very careful about that. So good luck, I want you to be safe, come home safe and happily. And Councilmember Walsh, if I were to pick between the Blueberry Farm and Town Square Park, where would I go?
Almost.
For April 22nd?
You're asking a tough question. I mean...
How can you choose?
Where do they need you the most?
You know, it's, what do you say, John? I mean, it's...
Yes, show up, either one.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, it's needed both places, and we can take as many people as show up both places also. I mean, it's, it's needed, it's needed.
Thank you, have a wonderful trip.
And there's, and there's opportunities for people of all abilities. I mean, if somebody isn't up to going out and, and working a shovel, or pulling weeds, or whatever else, I mean, he can sit at the check-in table and check people in and hand out water and things like that. So there's something for everybody.
All right.
All ages.
Come back safe.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, great work, everybody.